This meeting is taking place using the GoToMeeting electronic platform. Participation is taking place remotely, not in person. Meeting is being televised and recorded by Chelmsford Telemedia for interested community members to access and watch. Meeting members are encouraged to submit comments and questions to the school committee members or superintendent of schools, Dr. Jay Lang via email. These comments will be read under the public participation portion of the agenda. Anyone watching this meeting live has questions or comments to share. They are encouraged to email one of us during the meeting. We'll read those during our second public input session at the end of the meeting. So, the Chelmsford School Committee, for the record, can we just go around and do a rule call? Attendants, Donna Nukem.
Here.
John Moses.
Here.
Jeff Doherty.
Here.
Maria Santos.
Here.
Superintendent Lang.
I'm here.
Assistant Superintendent Hirsch.
Here.
Jonathan Collins, Dr. of Finance.
Here.
All right, so I'll start. We have to approve our minutes for our meeting on May 5th.
I make a motion to approve the regular school committee meetings from May 5th, 2020.
Second. Okay, anybody have any corrections or questions on the minutes? Okay, all right, so we'll vote. Donna.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Maria.
Aye.
An aye, so five zero to approve the minutes. Are student reps coming tonight, do we know, or?
No. They were. They had a lot going on, they just emailed to say that they couldn't make it, so that's fine.
Okay, all right. Is there any good news that we want to share today?
We're still here. I mean, I think, just in general, in good news, I think a lot of people have come into some good routines. People are doing a lot of sharing. There's been some wonderful activities that have been happening. I know that Jay tries to highlight as many as possible as a newsletter, but there's way more than just what's happening in that newsletter. So, I think, just in general, we're, you know, we're cooking along, and we're getting to the home stretch at this point.
Anybody else with good news, like to share? All right, we're now to then our first public input part of our meeting. So, if any members have received any emails with questions or comments, now is the time if you'd like to share them. Anybody have anything? Donna?
I was just gonna say, I think that we're gonna cover alone a lot of these concerns under our update on the status of the closure.
Okay, all right.
Sam with me.
Okay, all right, anybody else, John, Jeff? All right, so moving on to new business. So, updates on the status of the closure.
Yes, thank you. Couple of updates for you this evening. As Linda alluded to a little bit earlier, in the weekly newsletters, we've just been talking about the continued remote learning. I think we're actually in a pretty good swing at this point. It's been a number of weeks. I think it has been a big lift for everyone involved, parents, staff, you know, admin. You know, we continue to do pretty well. We have about three, only about three and a half weeks left in the school year, which is amazing. So, we've got Memorial Day weekend coming up next Monday as a holiday. So, there'll be no school next week. We'll come back in June at that point. So, it is kind of amazing how quickly things are starting to wrap up, but I'm actually very pleased with where we're at with regard to the remote learning. I think, all in all, it's really going fairly well, and it couldn't have happened without the help of, and support of so many people making it possible. So, we're very happy about that. We were hoping for this week to get some more of a definitive answer or recommendation guidelines from the governor's press conference yesterday. He had alluded previously to hearing a little bit about end-of-year activities and graduation, things like that, as far as some statewide guidance on the matter. And unfortunately, that wasn't part of the discussion yesterday with that. We did hear a little bit about the state's reopening, that various phases, how they were gonna start to reopen the state, some of the social distancing requirements that are still in place, some of the requirements around how many people can occupy spaces at the same time. So, at this point in time, because, again, we do need to make some definitive plans with regard to the end of the year. I did have a meeting this morning with the high school staff. I know they were meeting with some students and also the class advisors after our meeting. And we will, before the end of the weekend, in Friday's communication, report out what the end-of-year activities, including, you know, what graduation will look like, things along those lines. Again, we were hoping for some guidance and some framework from the state yesterday. That's why we're kind of holding off to this point. But, at this point, again, our seniors are actually, their last day of classes is Friday. They're gonna be coming in next week to drop off books and do all of their end-of-the-year kind of activities to tighten everything up before they leave. And I want them to leave knowing how, at least what we're gonna be certain of as we get into the end of the school year in summer. So, look for those announcements this week that will be coming in the packet. We also have some internal meetings this week to talk a little bit about what summer programming may or may not look like, both within our special education department and extended-year programming, as well as within community education and some of the different summer program offerings. You know, without tipping my hat, I am very concerned about the kind of the pacing of the rollout and the reopening of the state with regard to requirements on groups that are gonna move forward with different activities, how many can participate at a time, what type of health plans we have to have in place. So, that is something we're looking very seriously at. But I do know that particularly on the Jay Gear side and the comment side, I wanna meet with Robert and her staff this week to talk a little bit about summer and what that may or may not look like, so that we can also be telling parents into this week early next week what they can expect for the summer, because they need to make some plans on their own with the end of the school year coming. So, we're gonna have to do that again, just taking into consideration the governor's phase reopening of the state. But at this point in time, we don't have any definitive recommendations from either the governor's office or the Department of Ed on those matters. When it comes to special education, I know there have been weekly calls with regard to that. I think everyone would like to see in-person special educational services over the summer, if that was possible. That's another group I'm honestly not feeling too confident with, just with regard to kind of where we're at with the reopening. You know, the number of students that are gonna be involved, close contact with some of the students. So, we are exploring both in-person as well as remote offerings. And again, just hoping for some across-the-state guidance with regard to extended summer. It would be much easier if all districts were doing the same thing. We do have a conference call on Thursday with the Greater Merrimack Valley superintendents. So, if the state does not act statewide with any recommendations, it is likely as a group, we will try to be consistent with our advice and programming. So, we'll come on that at the end of the week as well. We do continue to receive good feedback on the newsletters. I think people have been appreciating the communications line, and we've also received some very good feedback from the schools themselves. They get into a lot more school-specific information. As many of you know, this past week, we had our staff come back into the buildings to pick up any materials that they need to finish out schooling through the end of June. And we decided that if staff were gonna return to the buildings, we didn't want them coming and going, you know, to avoid contact and also to allow us to be able to get a little bit of a head start on some of our summer cleaning. So, we asked them when they came back in to get any materials they needed for education, if they could also close up their classroom while they were there. So, with very few exceptions, most of, well, not all, but just about all of our staff did come in last week and do that. We have a few staff in this week, kind of finishing things up with the hope of being able to really turn the schools over next Tuesday after the long weekend to our building custodians and also our contracted cleaners for the summer. That's gonna give them an extra, at least, a good three to three and a half weeks in the buildings before the July 4th, which they typically don't get, so that they are gonna be able to do a deeper cleaning than they normally would and hopefully finish their cleaning process earlier in August to allow us, at that point, when we're talking about reentry and what the fall is gonna look like, to have a little bit more time in the building. So, I think everyone's gonna appreciate that on the other end. This week, the schools also provided opportunity for their students to come back to the buildings. It was done very thoughtfully and carefully, where students were assigned specific days and times to come back if they had anything in the buildings that they needed to get. I know at the middle school and high school level, a lot of kids had left materials in their lockers or even at the gym lockers in the high school. So, they were able to come back in this week and pick up those materials. At the elementary school level, we didn't want the kids going back into the buildings, because often, if the younger kids go in, the parents go with them, and it could just be too many people on the scene at the same time. So, our teachers actually did a very nice job last week when they were in packing up their classrooms. They bagged up all the material for their kids. And so, the elementary parents are actually just driving by the school, and they're being given a bag of all of their students' materials. So, that's limiting people coming and going from the buildings, but that also went very well. I know that was an extra step for our elementary teachers, so I really do appreciate the work that they did to help put that together. So, we are really looking like just about all of our buildings will be vacated by Friday. And next week, again, we're gonna start our summer cleaning. I'll be able to report to you over the course of the, you know, June and July timeframes, how we're doing with that. And we'll also start to switch some of our planning from closure of the school year to really what reopening is going to look like. I did allude in the email communication last Friday that I do want the staff to be focusing these next couple of weeks on, you know, finishing up the school year properly, the school year. But as soon as the school year does conclude in mid-June, and the end of June, July, and even into August, I am going to convene some working groups to take a look at, number one, how this past spring remote learning went. What went well, what could we improve upon, even when it comes to timeliness of implementing different aspects of remote learning, if we ever had to do something like this again, now that we've been through it, more different stages, when we might have done different iterations or made different amendments to our programming. So, we're gonna have groups to take a look at that at the elementary, the middle, and the high school level. And we're also gonna convene some working panels and teams to take a look at what reentry in the fall looks like. There has been a lot of dialogue happening statewide. And also, we have a representative from the Merrimack Valley who's on a statewide commission taking a look at reopening the schools in the fall. Those groups are supposed to start reporting back their findings and recommendations to school districts in early to mid-June. I don't think the work will be complete, but that will at least provide us with a framework for our summer groups to be able to take some of the recommendations that they're receiving and really put Chelmsford's spin on them, taking into consideration our facilities and layouts and what safety procedures and guidelines and protocols will look like for the fall. Again, I think taking a look at what really went well and what we can improve upon with our current practice and taking a look at some of the sanitary health and safety measures for the fall, I think those groups will all come together nicely over the summer and really provide a framework for us for reopening when we are allowed to do that in the fall. One last aspect, again, I wanted to kind of get through this school year before we got too deep into looking into it. But after Memorial Day weekend, more likely the first week in June, we are gonna put together a parent survey to solicit some feedback from parents, because obviously, we'll have the feedback from staff. But I'd like to hear from parents at the various levels of the district with regard to their experiences with remote learning. Again, what worked well, what could be improved upon. And I want to be able to provide that feedback to the working groups and take a look at, you know, how our process went and then what we can do to improve upon that moving forward. So, those are some of the key elements and updates for you on the planning. There is still a tremendous amount of work ongoing, and it's not gonna slow down. We have a lot of work ahead of us. One kind of side note is because of the closure and the fact that we actually did close school early, we didn't have to come back with staff and students. We were able to get a head start on the South Row replacement project. That's actually gonna be very helpful in the fall, coming back to school, because we're not gonna have to contend with that. And last week, the contract is actually beginning that project. So, if you happen to drive by South Row, they lay down areas right in front of the building. You'll see a lot of different drains and pallets of roofing materials and whatnot. But they're actually making tremendous progress. I think they're actually anticipating being done the major piece of construction into May, first week in June. So, they really should be able to button up that whole project by July 4th, I would imagine. And then we're really gonna have, again, those two months to prepare all of our buildings for the fall. So, that was, you know, kind of a nice thing that came from this closure, that we were able to get them a little bit earlier time into the buildings. And again, that will help us on the other end to come the side of the school year. So, those are the, kind of the big updates for you learning-wise. No significant changes this week to report to you as far as the actual instruction itself for the remote learning, more of the different pieces that are kind of complementing it. Happy to answer any questions you have, but again, those are some of the general elements.
Okay, questions, Donna, you had it first.
So, just a couple of questions. With regards to special education, I know we have some IEPs that have ESY services in them. So, and I know that Amy has been fantastic. I mean, even some of these plans that have expired, I think that the plan was to allow those services to be able to continue, because it was what was in the plan last year, and we're just gonna have a stay-put IEP and, you know, provide the services that would be necessary. So, we have our onsite program, and we also have off-site program, the other camps and whatnot. So, just keep in mind. Have you heard anything from any of the off-site programming places about what their plans are?
No, unfortunately, we haven't, Donna. I was actually speaking with a parent who has a student enrolled in an extended-year program at one of our private placements. And even the private placements haven't decided what their program is gonna look like yet. I know Valley is still actually trying to take that into consideration for the summertime. A lot is gonna depend on those particular programs that I think, whether they end up opening under the governor's Phase Two or Phase Three section. And again, I don't think we're gonna, unfortunately, we're not gonna know for another good three or four weeks of whether as a state we're on target to actually progress to Phase Two or if there is a spike in numbers or if we're gonna have to somehow adjust the implementation of Phase One that we're in. We're not gonna be able to make some of those decisions at this point. I know what the Department of Ed has been saying, and again, we're pushing them for some guidance on this or just a more definitive response, is that if we are able to have in-person extended-year services, then to be in compliance with the IEPs, we really need to have an in-person program together. If in the event that the state, you know, basically indicates that we should not be meeting in person, then we would be looking at delivering a remote extended-year program. That's gonna work for some families, it's not gonna work for others. So, I think we're gonna keep that individualized, kind of look at our programming. And a lot of the remote learning plans that have been put in place for the school year will probably roll into the summer. But a lot of that is gonna have to be probably not done through a formal IEP process or a team meeting process. Just the dialogue that's already been happening between the chairs and the parents, to figure out what programming is gonna be best for their students for the summer.
Then, the other thing I was wondering, I'm glad that we're gonna have something coming out on Friday about graduation. Do we have any information on about these transitions between elementary and middle school and middle and high school? And to follow up on that, would it be worth convening another working group just to talk about these transitions and how it is that we can help kids? You know, as they, because we don't have our typical, you know, end-of-the-year tours and, you know, meet and greets and things like that. So, I mean, I know you have your reopening one. I didn't know if that was more related to kind of the pragmatics and that, you know, maybe something to consider about what we're gonna do to be able to help these kids.
Yeah, I definitely, and that's not a group that we're gonna forget about in the discussions we had, even with the principals yesterday in our weekly check-in. They are talking about what those move-ups are gonna look like. And again, it's not gonna be the normal kind of transitional meetings we would normally have. I think the, that is gonna be laid out in the communications to the parents by level, hopefully at the end of this week as well. I can tell you the general flavor is that we're not gonna be able to do those in-person transition meetings by the end of the school year. So, a lot of that work has been pushed to August and basically tried to do introductory meetings in August with the schools, make more schools available as far as dates and times for like tours of the buildings, meet and greets with the staff. But each of the individual elementary schools are gonna be touching upon that in their communications forms to parents. And also, at the middle school level, we, the eighth grade is going on to the high school. The high school and the two middle school principals are taking a look at that mentoring program that they have in place for the students, because I think that's really gonna be very helpful to allow the eighth-grade students to be paired or partnered with an upperclassman at the high school to help in that transition. So, I think that program is gonna be key. Outside of that, when it comes to some of the more programmatic cases, whether it's special education students or ELL students, a lot of the discussions are already ongoing between, say, your eighth-grade staff and your high school incoming ninth-grade staff to talk about the students who are coming up, what placements might look like, because they're finalizing the course enrollment process at the high school right now. So, a lot of that is ongoing, I'm actually feeling pretty good about that. If that weren't properly addressed in one of the focus groups or panels we put together, we certainly could have another one, we could have an offshoot. But I think some of those concepts could actually get rolled into some of the groups that we're already gonna form, because they're gonna be comprised of those various levels.
All right, this is the last thing, and this is really actually more for, you know, maybe my benefit. I was wondering if we could put together like an informal timeline? Now, I know that there's many, many things that we can't answer. We don't know what the beginning of the year is gonna look like. And this is what actually makes some of these transition plans problematic, because we don't know how we're gonna be transitioning. You know, are we transitioning, you know, coming back to the buildings? Are we transitioning, you know, to remote learning? We won't know. So, but is there a way that we could just put together like a little bit of a timeline around? So, we know, like, for example, next Tuesday, we're gonna start our summer cleaning. You know, when the working groups will convene and maybe when we can expect some reports from them. And when we're gonna, when we need to actually, maybe a hard date around, will we anticipate being able to make some decisions about anything, something? Even if it's, you know, again, fluid, I mean, so that, I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out some way to kind of structure this for us, because it feels so nebulous, just really all over the place. I just, it's really hard for me to kind of wrap my brain around. Does that make sense? Am I making any sense here? So.
You are, and I mean, I think this is not unique to Chelmsford. I think a lot of the situation is, and everyone, you know, parents are feeling this. I think teachers are feeling this, admin are feeling this as well. We're really not getting concrete guidance from anyone kind of above us who has to mandate like some of the different elements of our learning. So, I think the Department of Ed has, you know, attempted to provide some guidance in, even when it came to, say, remote learning or end-of-year activities. But there's also always that caveat that, you know, this is the recommendation, but it's really a local decision. And, you know, aside from that, I think they've been kind of waiting to see what direction the governor is gonna be going with, with regard to his opening, because, again, I know he wants to take safety and welfare of the citizens of the Commonwealth at the forefront. He's also trying to balance kind of the reopening of the economy and all these different elements that impact this. But we don't have, even like in the plan that came out yesterday, I can't tell you in three weeks' time, we're definitely gonna be in, say, Phase Two. And what Phase Two is gonna look like for the public schools and what we're able to offer, not offer. So, I think at this point, obviously, we're gonna take into consideration the governor's phase opening. We're gonna take into consideration what the Department of Education is giving us as general parameters. But we will start to kind of just devise what a closing and then a reopening as far as taking all that into consideration, what it's gonna look like for Chelmsford. And we can start to kind of put that into a very loose timeframe and start to report on that point.
Actually, maybe even rather than a timeframe, if we break down some of the loose things on our agenda a little bit more, Dennis, about things that we need to be, you know, thinking about as we're going forward. So, the closing and what, you know, marks we need to hit as a district, and then the reopening and what marks we need to hit as a district. Thank you.
All right, Maria, any question?
Yeah, more than one. Okay, Dennis. So, to start off with, if you could, Jay, could you talk a little bit more about what these working groups are? Because I think, you know, you said working groups, you're convening them and so on. Who are gonna be part of these working groups? How are they gonna work? When are you convening them? Those type of things, if you could just talk a little bit about that.
Sure, so, one of the things that I really do want people focusing on the next couple of weeks is really just the current school year and closing down that properly. But what I'm gonna be doing is soliciting input from our staff. And when I say staff, I mean, you know, at the elementary level, the middle school level, the high school level, in various positions, so that we have involvement of all those different levels from people who have been involved with the remote learning. I wanna be able to, again, kind of go back to March 13th and the day that we decided we were gonna be closing schools for at least two weeks and take a look at, you know, what did a short-term closure look like? If we had to do this in the future, you know, do we have basically, you know, a two-week plan? Do we have a two-month plan? You know, what if we had to have a six-month plan? You know, what does remote learning look like in all those different elements? And when do you start to roll out, based on our previous experience, some of the different pieces of it? So, you know, originally, we really focused on, that first week was kind of like a snow week almost. We didn't know if we were gonna be out for a week, well, we knew we were gonna be out for two weeks. But we didn't know if it was gonna be two weeks or it was gonna be longer. In Week Two, we actually then had our teachers kind of re-engage their students. We did a lot of elective-type activities where students would be doing, say, going to the website, picking different tutorials that they could utilize using some of our software. It was very much student-driven. We were at the same time kind of providing teachers with professional development behind the scenes so that we could then switch the learning in Weeks Three and Four back to more teacher-directed instruction. But I really wanna hear from our teachers, you know, what was helpful in that professional development? Were there different elements that they would have liked to have received either earlier? Is there information that they'd like to receive moving forward? So, I wanna get into all those different aspects. And then after about Week Four or Five, you know, we kind of evolved into our remote learning plan. And at that point in time, again, we were getting feedback from some parents, particularly at the elementary level, around just the volume of work and difficulty keeping up with some of the academic work and some of the special work. I know the principals made some adjustments to the schedule to kind of allow flex day mid-week with their own new assignments. But I wanna find out, you know, was that well-received? When we did that, you know, should we have done that sooner? Should it have not happened at all? Like, these are all the different things we need to kind of talk through. We're all focused right now on just getting through the next three and a half weeks. But then internally, you know, our staff will be kind of developing almost like talking points about these different elements of our remote learning rollout. And we'll get deeper into what actually, again, worked well, what needs to be tweaked, what needs to be improved, so that we can have more of a written plan moving forward for if we had to do something again for two weeks, for two months, or for six months.
So, as part of this working group, one of the things you mentioned is that you're gonna reach out and do a parent survey. I was gonna recommend, if you could consider also including surveying middle, uh, grade school level and also the high school student level, surveying students as well, just to see what their input is about the learning. Parents, I think, work extremely well for the lower levels. But at the high school level, to be quite honest with you, there's very little that I have to do in terms of being a parent, I'm here to support, I get the emails and so on. But, and with the technicians, when things break down, okay, we become a technical staff. But there's very little, the students don't have a lot of input on that. And they are ultimately the consumer, I love the way Mr. Sherry said that. It's a student who's the consumer of this learning process anytime. The other thing I was going to tell you is that I have received a couple of input from parents on the grammar school level, the lower level. And they said one of the things that's difficult is that the students get a writing prompt, let's say, and they're a first-grade level, they're not good typers, et cetera. So, when they go into type, there's auto-correct that tries to correct everything they're doing. And they're not, they're missing a couple of skills here. One, they're not printing. Two, they're not really phonetically spelling things out. I remember the number of mistakes little kids make, but they're phonetically getting it. So, maybe consider what the technology is that's needed there and how to deal with that. So, that was one of the parents' inputs at the lower level. At the middle level, to deal with what you've been talked about here, I got a question about transitioning. And parents who are in fourth grade, a couple reached out saying, what does the middle school look like? What's, I hear they're in teams, what's teams like? That type. Uh, what's, I hear they're in teams. What's teams like? That type of thing. I think you, you were talking about the principals are going to be dealing with this. But I would really recommend very highly doing something before school uh breaks out. To um show parents what it's like, uh maybe even having fifth graders talk uh in a, in a little program. That the fourth graders can listen to, maybe doing a couple of meets, whatever it is, introducing the teams. To the fourth grader so that they know who these teachers are, as if they were on a tour. That type of thing, I think, might be nice. Uh, and it's not that difficult to do because you're just, you know, taping some people and then putting it up. Um, it it might be uh ease some of the uh anxiety that really does happen during the summer in these transitional type of things. Um, so I was going to recommend that to you because I've gotten several comments um from, from parents on this.
Well, I'll take that feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff or John, you have any questions or?
No.
Yeah?
I was, uh, no.
Um, just, just a request. Uh, it sounds like there's a lot of stuff coming out at the end of the week, um, some decisions about senior activities and all that. Could you just keep us in the loop in in terms of those? Um, so, um, just so in case we get questions or um so that we know what the plans are going forward. That'll be all right.
Well, when we get the um, particularly the high school one uh this week, when we get that update, I'll make sure I uh get an email of it and I'll forward it to you.
Okay, great. All right. Anybody else uh questions or anything on the updates and the closure? Right. Moving on then to the next item. Uh, recognition of LGBTQ month.
Yes, I put this on the agenda. Um, it was on our agenda last June uh for the first time. It was a recognition of June as uh LGBTQ month. And I know we weren't meeting in person and uh we obviously weren't on site with um staff and students in the buildings. Um, but I still feel it's important as a community to um, um, you know, to recognize uh this and to actually have the school committee vote in uh favor and support of this. Um, you know, our students and staff are still working online. We can still send a a communication out. Letting them know that um, you know, this is really the uh, you know, Chelmsford's a great community. It's a welcoming community. And uh I think it's important to still maintain this, and even though, again, we weren't uh in person uh virtually to uh, I think it's very symbolic of our, of our work together. So I would recommend the school committee uh still take this vote into um. Acknowledge June as uh LGBTQ month.
All right. Any uh thoughts, questions on the issue? So Johnny, you good to make a motion?
The media button's dangerous there. Uh, I make a motion for the school committee to vote it. Hold on. I recommend the school committee vote at the regular meeting of May nineteenth to proclaim and recognize June twentieth as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month in the Chelmsford Public Schools.
Any seconds? Second, can we have a motion second? Uh, any further question? Okay, we'll take a vote. Um, thank you, Jay. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Jay, for doing this, and also thank you to Lorraine and Christie uh for putting the materials together. Anybody else? So Donna, your vote?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Myself, aye, so five zero.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So um next thing is um the resolution in support of increased federal support um in stimulus fund for public schools. So um last meeting, I mentioned an email from MESC regarding a resolution that the Boston School Committee. I had put forward asking legislators to support additional funding, education to help with the current situation. Um, seemed like people were interested in doing something like that, so I worked with the superintendent to try to kind of craft her own um resolution to center our, to our representatives. So if, I don't know if everybody had time to read it or not, but um, you know, I would like to um get approval of the, the committee and then we can. Those out to uh various people. So, any thoughts or questions on the resolution?
No, nice job.
Yes, thank you.
Good work.
Great. Right. Um, anything, anybody, I don't know, again, I don't know if anybody's ever had a chance to read it, but anything that you'd want to change or?
No.
All right, so, uh, Jay?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention this. I was uh pulling together some of the numbers for the resolution. I was amazed at some of the meals numbers that we um, you know, we've actually serving on a daily basis and even today. And um, you know, just want to take this opportunity to thank um, you know, Joanna, obviously, for her oversight with Nancy Antolini from the Food Service Program. But the work of themselves is still continuing on a day-to-day basis um to produce some great meals for us uh students and also the families um in need at this point. So, you know, over twenty-seven thousand meals in just the last couple of months, I think, is significant. And I never thought the number was going to be that high. So um, that was the one that stepped out to me was we're pulling this together.
Great. Um, so I will take a motion to approve the resolution.
I make a motion to approve the school committee resolution in support of increased federal support and stimulus funding for public K through twelve education.
Second. Uh, any further discussion on this? We'll vote. Uh, so Donna?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Myself, aye, so five zero on the vote. Um, but now my question is, um, who should we send this to?
Everybody?
Yeah, our local reps, I'm, you know, I would assume. Um, but any, I mean, Golden, Arceiro, Nagel, Goveya. Um, who else?
Lori Trahan, right?
Yep, yep. I have her on that.
In our son of birth.
So, all right, yeah. Um, any other? What was the last one?
What about Warren and um?
Yes, and.
Archie.
Archie. Thank you, okay. Yep, okay. All right, so um, all right, so we'll put that together and we'll get that sent out. Um, I'll come in and sign that and uh we'll get that sent out next week. So and now, so thank you for that. Um, so um moving on, the next item is recommended one-time budget expenditures.
Yeah, uh, thank you. So as you recall, um, each year, we actually um. Vote at this time of the year, usually it's a little bit earlier, um, but on some one-time expenditures to do with some of our um excess money. In included in the budget. So um Joanna reported on a third quarter uh financial report uh after. Till sometime in April, and then at our last meeting in early May, um Joanna had done a projection for us on um excess uh revenue, basically. Uh, that's projected through the end of the fiscal year. And so these are different expenditures we'd like to make um now uh for two reasons. Number one, they're considered one-time expenditures, so they're not adding to our base budget or our liability for the coming fiscal year. We wouldn't want to add um, say, physicians or things like that use, using this money because it was one-time money from twenty. We don't want that to have to carry uh into twenty-one. Um, so that's significant. And what we ended up doing is actually going through. All of the different requests that come in from various departments and schools, again, for this uh kind of one-time funding. So what I will do is um walk you through uh the list and give you um just a little bit of an idea um. On this form of what the uh the elements are. And then after this, we'll have a discussion about it. The next uh report is the actual budget transfers that would take place. Um, so let me give you some context for these um, these charges. At um two of the schools, and this is relatively small cost, um it was about thirty-five hundred dollars. At Byham, and then you'll see a similar one at Harrington. Um, in their cafeterias, um, they don't have uh regular like folding chairs. Um, if they were to have a parent assembly or meeting or things like that, uh they typically currently rely on the cafeteria tables that have those built-in um stool uh type functionality. And it's very uncomfortable for uh parents uh to sit in. Um, so they were asking for a folding chair to be able to help out with parent assemblies. Um, so that's why you see that cost at both schools. At uh Byham Center and Harrington, um, those three schools in particular are really squeezed as far as storage space within the buildings. When you're in those buildings, every little milk and cranny has got um some materials uh stored away in them. And so what they've asked for is an exterior storage container. Um, so those are, you'll see them on the outside of buildings. Um, they would go behind the school itself. Um, they're those metal uh cargo uh type uh containers that end up getting uh refurbished, repainted. They put um, um, you know, air holes in them so that they uh don't, whatever's inside doesn't contain mold and things like that. Uh, but this will allow the schools to be able to take some stuff that was in storage in the buildings and move it outside the buildings. Um, so those storage containers are approximately five thousand dollars apiece, so that's why you see it for fifteen thousand dollars. At the high school, uh we asked the uh music department, actually, you'll see a couple of different music um items. And uh they're running uh short and would like to replace some of their band uniforms. Um, I think this is particularly timing because next year is their um Orlando uh trip where the, the band goes on. So usually there's an uptick in um student participation because of that particular trip. Um, so this will fund um twenty additional uh band uniforms, and they'll be able to cycle out some of their older ones that need replacement uh with these. Uh, so that is included there at uh ninety-eight hundred dollars. Um, you'll see line items, one at Chelmsford High School and then one at McCarthy. I'll touch on them both now. Um, these are AV upgrades. The high school is in the learning commons, and McCarthy is in the lecture hall. Um, this will basically update the technology. New, you know, audio um speakers and whatnot for presentation and for working groups as well as uh video. So new uh kind of TV screens, projection materials um in those two spaces because the um space is used quite often for um class gatherings, after-school activity gatherings. And um that has not been replaced since I've been here, so it's, it's well over five years. And um, if I had a feeling, just looking at it, it's, it's probably in excess of ten years. Um, but as new technology comes out, usually every, you know, three to five years, you'd be replacing that. And um so we've included uh funding for that in this request. Um, the next item, which is the big item on this uh list we previously alluded to. Um, this would be for the purchasing of the elementary literacy program, the uh Fontaine-Simbanne reading program. Um, so Linda had reported at a previous meeting about that recommendation. Um, this would be the uh final price, and with this particular company, it's a one-time price. Uh, different vendors have different pricing uh schemes. Some actually have the money upfront, which is um, I think, actually fortunate for us. Not know what we're going to get into the next couple of years budget-wise. Other companies have a lesser upfront cost, but then you're paying each year for the subsequent years. Um, so this six fifty-five is actually going to uh provide the whole program at the elementary level for us. As you recall, we'll talk about this later in the agenda. Um, we had budgeted two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in next year's uh budget uh to pay for a piece of this program. And we were going to be looking for about five-hundred-thousand dollars in excess um funding from this year to jumpstart that purchase. Um, we ended up being able to negotiate with the company down for the whole package to come in at the six sixty-five. And I'm recommending um making that entire purchase now, and that will allow us some budget flexibility in fiscal twenty-one. Um, so that's why that number is on there, and that's a a large number. The next number of items all relate to the facilities department, and a lot of this is for um extra equipment to go into the summer, but then also thinking ahead to the fall. Um, we know we're going to need to buy some additional um, we use these father-mister units um in the building, so we need some additional units like that. Um, disinfectant itself. Um, and I started to do a jumpstart on ordering some PPEs uh for the fall. Uh, gloves, masks, things along those lines. Um, signage that's going to be required with the reopening of buildings and schools. Um, so those are all of those various uh facility items. At the um Harrington, I did mention previously the folding chairs, same as uh Byham. Uh, the Harrington also is in need of some uh kiddie tables, their instructional tables at the elementary level. Um, that's twenty-eight hundred dollars. It's on the list. Um, I mentioned previously the uh AV upgrade at the high school. That's a similar one at McCarthy for the lecture hall. Um, couple of musical instruments at Parker, I guess, is missing a couple of sets of uh cellos and then also concert chimes. Um, I understand the Christmas concert will be wonderful next year if they have the concert chimes, so looking forward to that. Um, at South Row, we actually had purchased new uh mailbox units for the office and a new um counter uh for the office. But we found when they were moving the old counter, there's actually some asbestos in the uh floor tiles underneath, so we need to do an abatement. Um, so we're looking for an extra sixty-one hundred dollars to properly abate that. Again, timeline-wise, this is actually good news. If there's no one in the building, we can go in and do this now. Get it out of the way before the summer, get the new uh desk installed, so that they'll be hitting the ground come the fall. And then the last two items um are also significant items dealing with technology. And um, as you recall, uh last year, we funded approximately eighty or eighty-five uh classroom devices. This year, I'm uh breaking it up, and this evening, I'm recommending we move forward with forty-five interactive classroom uh setups of one-hundred-and-ninety-three. As we get into June, yeah, it's probably the first meeting in June when we have a um. Better idea on uh available funding for the end of June thirtieth. As well as Joanna and I really looking closely at the circuit breaker and how much we're going to be able to carry over. We may need to do some actual spending out of um special education, not risk uh going over the amount of the um. What we can have on hand. So you, you'll probably receive another uh set of some one-time expenditures come uh the first meeting in June. That would be one that we would increase. And then lastly, for technology, um, we had to deploy, I believe, fifteen or sixteen um carts uh this past year. Putting devices in uh students' hands who didn't have them for this remote learning. Um, we're obviously at the end of the school year requesting those devices back. We're going to try to put them back into circulation. Um, but I am recommending we replace fifteen carts. That's where the four-hundred-and-fifty devices come from. Um, in the event that either uh the Chromebooks don't come back in great condition to be reused. Uh, we did put our oldest Chromebooks out into circulation, so we know um we're going to have to buy some new devices as well for the time being. Um, aside from this one-time funding, um utilizing the school choice funding, we are moving forward with the second year of the one-on-one implementation. So a new group of fifth-grade students and a group of ninth-grade students are going to receive devices. That means half the district, grades five to twelfth, are actually going to have their own devices. And we can then um reutilize existing carts in those schools, but also uh bring them down to the elementary level if we need to. Uh, because in a couple of years' time, really two more years' time, everyone, grades five to twelfth, is going to have their own device, and we're not going to have a need for carts. In the fifth uh through twelfth grade areas. So we're going to be able then just move them down to the elementary levels. And at some point, we may even have a discussion about, you know, is there a certain grade level at the elementary where you start to provide as a regular piece of instruction a device? We're still a couple of years from that because we really do need to get through the, the four-year implementation of the one-on-one for grades five to twelfth. Um, but this will at least allow us to refresh some of the carts that need refreshing. Focus those additional technologies once we're back in an in-person environment at the elementary level. And um, you know, make some decisions in the outlier years going forward with regard to what we do with technology and one-on-one devising at the elementary level. So this list of uh purchases on this particular form, I thought it was easiest to just show you alphabetically and then by school what the um uh the request was. The total's just under, well, just a little over a million one. Um, and then when we get to the actual transfer page, Joanna has it broken up because um some of the line ends will need a transfer, some won't. We can get a little deeper into it when we get to that section. Um, but for discussion purposes, I thought it was easiest to provide you with this list here. So those, these are the recommendations for tonight's one-time purchasing. Um, at our last meeting again, Joanna rec- um rejected at least a million two eight, a little shy of one point three. Um, was going to be available, and that's a very safe estimate of what's available. Um, if anything, I do think that number will potentially grow over the next couple of weeks. So I'm very comfortable moving forward with this million one at this point. Um, I'd also, you know, when, when the committee hopefully uh votes and approves this this evening, some of these items are time-sensitive. So I really do want to get working with Joanna to get our orders in. When it comes to the technology items, um, it's very difficult to get technology at this point. Um, so I want to be able to get these orders in and try to push them with the vendors um so that we can get stuff uh over the summer before the start of the school year in August. And also um, some of the facilities uh equipment and the PPEs. Uh, we're competing with a lot of other communities to be able to um to do that. So I want to get those orders in and try to start to stock up a little bit um to be in a better position come fall. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have, um, and that provides you the framework of the recommendation.
Hey, anybody have any questions or comments?
Just a comment. I'm glad that uh we're getting all the uh the cleaning supplies and the mister and the fathers and all that. That's really good. Considering.
It's a really nice. It's a really nice unit if you haven't seen it if you pop by one of the schools one day it it's very nice they can go in you know every night you know they basically fog the room the chemical adheres to the desks or work surfaces and I think it was within like five seconds it basically kills any kind of germ that's there they're very easy to use the custodians use them they come in and do our office like once a week as well and you almost can smell like a little bit of a chlorine type smell if you smell like you're in a like a locker room with a pool they have a little bit of like that smell near you going but at least you know that it's been cleaned that's it's an unmistakable smell that's how that's at least what I related to when I come in in the morning if ever in a building that has a pool you always have that chlorine type smell.
Can you continue with that question this it's about thirty thousand dollars in facilities here is that for this coming year what you anticipate will be required period or is that in addition to what's in the budget for next year?
This is this is additional at this point so this is in addition to what we have in the budget to give us a jumpstart on purchasing some of the product which we know we're gonna be in competition to try to get if we would wait until after the fiscal year begins.
So for example for PPE this which is totally new I don't think it's in next year's budget I don't remember seeing it in next year's budget so is that sufficient?
That's a realistic number at this point with regard to how much we're gonna be able to get on hand we could put twenty or thirty thousand dollars on line item but our vendors physically can't supply it so that's gonna be something that we have to monitor over the course of the summer and Brian does have a very good relationship with the vendors if they have access to stock they will reach out and you know will quickly issue a purchase order if we think we can get something on hand but this is sufficient to get us through the through the summer and through the start of the school year again as the working groups kind of detail what is gonna be involved in some of this rollout.
I don't see here things like sanitizer that type of thing is that all disinfectant?
Yeah that's what I call disinfectant so the sanitizer would be the disinfectant.
All right do we need any kind of units where you can handle washing stuff to other schools?
We have that.
We have portable units to others?
No we wouldn't have a portable unit but in the bathrooms themselves we use a chemical in the you know the I'm losing the words here but in the the device you push to get the the chemical to come out that we have plenty of and Brian does start up most chemicals so I'm feeling confident that we would have that.
Because in some of the older schools that I've heard people talk they actually have to have portable units and they attach them to the cooler you know the water drinking fountain units to get the water but it's to wash hands in hallways and so on in addition to whatever's available in the bathroom.
That wouldn't work for us because we don't have hot water running in because it's really the hot water that's critical but we don't have hot running to those devices but we would have the bathrooms the student and the staff bathrooms.
Okay so just thinking about that I have other questions but that was on what John had asked.
Okay. Other questions then besides on the sanitation side Maria?
All right so my other question is on technology and if we're spending quite a bit of money on interactive classroom panels in fact almost two hundred thousand dollars those are physically in a classroom right okay and so what where are these going?
In the classrooms at the middle schools and the high school.
Middle school and high school okay and so this presumes of course that we're gonna be there and we're gonna have we're gonna be physically learning at the schools which we all hope so and I truly truly that would be wonderful but it's almost two hundred thousand dollars that we're spending on that so I I just wanna know in my mind that the next item of one fifty seven five or chromebook carts is truly sufficient so in other words when we have those chromebook carts another four hundred and fifty devices that basically is what one and a half classes worth of students?
What do you mean one and a half?
So you know there are three hundred almost four hundred students in one seniors almost four hundred people so you're basically if you needed to give a device to each student you're taking care of another class level if we got to the point where we have to hand out devices again.
Yeah the the reason that I have those on there is we basically had to break down I believe it was fifteen or sixteen.
Okay.
Do the distribution of devices to the students this past spring who needed who needed a device at home that they didn't have one of their own so I think we're gonna get the vast majority of those devices back in good working order but those were our oldest machines that we had in the district so they would be coming up for renewal anyway. What I did was basically put in a replacement for those carts they would largely go at the elementary school level because at the middle school and the high school level we're gonna be adding approximately nine hundred devices for the fifth and the ninth grade levels and we don't need to have say at the high school we wouldn't need to have carts available for freshmen and sophomores because they would already have their own devices. At the middle school level the carts that are there will only have to be used in seventh and eighth grade.
And I understood that first of all I think it was it's incredible that only that number of devices had to go out to students in order for them to do online learning that's kind of amazing that that is the it's a small number in my opinion that went out to students which is great but I am very I think that when you do a survey and you find out from students that the ones who have a device and had access to it and knew how to work it and knew how to connect and did all of their stuff well way ahead of the other school had to get used to it may have even needed that access to the internet the whole thing so having that device is actually a big plus to reach students and their ability to learn if we have to go back into online for any number of months or any extended period of time so my thought is that the more of these Chromebooks that are out there and available on carts to students during the school day and I think coming out of this more teachers will want to do more things on Chromebooks because they're gonna have tremendous amount of lessons already developed and so on although many may not want because I think I'm getting tired of Zoom and Google to meeting and all this and everybody else but in any event having more access to these Chromebooks is really important to teach students it's a tool so when we get these four hundred and fifty additional devices and more students are using them they're already preparing in the event that things have to happen and I'm even gonna recommend to you that at the beginning of the school year you actually know right away which student would need to take home a Chromebook in the event that we go into that type of situation so that we're already prepared and maybe even get an assessment if you can at the end of this year but this really adds to a student's ability to learn and I think the interactive class panels in my opinion right now it's doubtful whether in the coming year they're always gonna have I think long-term wise hopefully it's gonna be there it's good for a few years and they have access to it but what it takes away from a student who doesn't have a Chromebook and knows how to use it while when they have to go into the distant learning is huge so for me it's more important to get more devices on hand Chromebooks than it is to have those panels right now in a classroom that's my way of thinking and if we could just talk about that for a little bit to make sure that we're making the right decision here.
Sure let me just chime in for a second then you guys can certainly talk the panels gotta go hand in hand with the the one-on-one rollout at the middle school and the high school so last summer when we did the fifth grade and the ninth grade all of the students in staff obviously of fifth and ninth grade students they received Chromebooks and each of those teachers in their classroom received the interactive board because when we're in an in-person setup they need to be able to project and to connect and to be able to really properly utilize those Chromebooks they need that setup so this next time around again we're assuming that we're gonna be back in person at some point and our tech plan was basically to roll out the two grade levels per year for four years and then we would be on a four-year replacement cycle so when we did the laptop purchases basically we entered into a four-year lease with them so an incoming fifth grade student this year has that device and we can afford to pay for that with the lease through the school choice funding for grades five six seven eight at the end of the four years they turn that device in they go to the high school and they get a new device and that device lasts them nine ten eleven twelve so every four years we can afford to basically keep these leases running utilizing the school choice funds so we didn't wanna actually have this burden or impact the local budget because we know there can be fluctuation with local budget from year to year so this was really part of a plan for sustainability in the long run as a district I'd be concerned about going much further than that because I don't think we can sustain more than two classrooms per year I would much prefer everyone in grades five to twelve right now to have the device and be working but in all honesty we can't afford that and that's why we kind of broke this into the the quarter pieces.
I got that but maybe I'm not understanding something when you look at interactive classroom panels what you're saying essentially is those are required for a teacher in a classroom in order to have the Chromebooks and the one-to-one.
To properly use them yes.
Okay so if that is a required item and you we have the next phase of the one-to-one it's just I just didn't understand why it's in one-time spending when it's required.
It's it's really in the one-time spending because we know it was part of a funding strategy we know that every year we're gonna have some surplus at the end of the year we had previously tried to incorporate the the interactive panels into the town's capital funding but you know we continually get pushed back year after year about that being a cost that the capital committee wanted to fund so we basically said you know what we'll roll that cost into our budget and basically utilize the one-time funding every year to be able to provide that but the devices themselves the strategy for paying for the device leases was to utilize the school choice funding for those.
Okay so there will be actually two more years we'll be spending about two hundred thousand dollars at the end of each year on these interactive panels because they're necessary in order to have the one-to-one initiative ongoing.
Yes in my opinion they're they're critical they're a teaching tool and they're gonna be utilized when we're in person I think you know the hot pot obviously is where remote right now but I think we have a brief about next fall and next school year going back to in-person learning and that's where I think they're gonna be critical but what we're gonna try to do is every year fund about eighty of them to be able to properly update the middle schools and the high school so that's why I was indicating this is the first installment right now and you'll probably receive another recommendation when we get to the June meeting to add some additional units I just didn't wanna go all the way and add them in at this point until we were able to figure out exactly what was gonna be happening with the circuit breaker carryover and you'll receive a further recommendation either at the next meeting or certainly by that second meeting in June.
Let me ask something.
I just wanted to just give just some perspective because when we originally started putting up interactive whiteboards back in the day we were connecting yeah she started laughing at me we were connecting that obviously when we were starting to understand universal design for learning what would that look like how can we visualize our learning so as the years go by of course technologies you know become greater and when you're implementing these type of things you do need that ability to have those panels so now they're called they're like almost like a TV panel now instead of a whiteboard you do need those even if the students have a computer the teacher uses that as a much very much as a teaching tool in the classroom so yes I just know remote at this point but when we go back when we go back as we're going back I keep saying it in the fall they're going to need this as their connection to having even the one-to-one devices so they're used all day long.
Okay Dallas did you want to say something else?
No I just I knew Linda had something she wanted to say so.
Yeah just to get perspective as somebody who's used these before and uses them now even in our training when we do PD we use them all the time and they're integral to what we do for teaching.
So they cost about twenty five hundred dollars each right?
Yeah.
And the whiteboards were like thousands?
Well they were well remember they were an interactive whiteboard the technology's come a long way so much more you can do with these interactive panels than we could have done and the projection is huge like so even no matter how you configure your classroom it's amazing how the students can see it based on where they are.
Twenty five hundred dollars? What's their life supposed to be just checking.
Maria just on the map they're a little over four thousand dollars apiece.
Wow okay.
There's a little over four thousand I'm just doing the rough map and we have these on a I would have to ask Bill if it was a five or a six year replacement cycle but it was a five or six year replacement cycle.
They're expensive okay so yeah.
Very similar to the interactive projector system.
Right so so when we look at this we're spending quite a bit of money on that which if you're telling me that it's necessary in order to be using the devices in the class and and you're the experts and you we know that this is required then of course I'm going with that but my biggest concern so if you can just assure me on this technology piece the last one the Chromebook carts that will be sufficient for the coming year if we transition over to online learning for any extended period of time for all our students to have a Chromebook if they need it.
I am confident given the way we did the rollout this spring any student that required a Chromebook because they did not have technology access at home had a device we have not heard from anyone who that the device access was an issue.
Okay.
I did and I will follow up with Bill I don't know that we have enough technology in the district to provide every single student with their own device whether they ask for it or not that's the question the carts that we broke down again we started breaking down the oldest you know obviously worked up to the more ones but I certainly think because we're gonna be adding another nine hundred devices for grades you know five and nine the incoming and with this four fifty I mean it's it's significantly more than we had access to for this year so I don't see any issue whatsoever taking care of any student that is really in need of a device but I don't know that this necessarily puts us at the one student for every device in the district.
I was going to also suggest and if parents can afford it and can do it for their students for the coming year consider having the students have a Chromebook and if if Bill can publish what the specifications are for the Chromebooks that you are making available in the classrooms so that you know students can easily have those skills available if needed I'm sure there are many parents who would be able to do it and would want to do it so that their students are able to easily transition so just just a recommendation of that but thank you thank you for clarifying that.
Linda something else?
No I was just gonna say and Bill would speak to this that they wouldn't transfer back and forth with the schools because we have our own security on the school ones and because that's what we've been going through and parents have called and say how do my kids access the Google classroom we've had to bring them in a different way because it's not our device so we'll be able to go back and forth from the school per se and be able to use all of the features that we would have as a school device compared to a personal device as well as also servicing it so I just I wanted to be I get what you're saying like I would probably have got one for my kids at home but it probably would be a home device not a go back.
I understand.
Back and forth it's a good suggestion for parents if they need to know which one to get but I just wanted to make sure that people didn't think it was transferable between But I just wanted to make sure that people didn't think it was transferable between school and home, and being able to use all of the features that we have with a school device for students. And again, also the servicing of their personal computers, that's all.
Yeah, no, I totally understand that, Josh. I mean, I think that, but even if the student knows how to use the features of the device, and if the device is up and running and ready to go, if there's something that comes up, then I think that that's really important. So we don't have a bring-your-own-device type of system in our schools, which is really what you're talking about. And is it something that maybe we, this is part of your working group, whatever you want to consider. But, and we don't have that anymore, but, you know, going forward, think about it. And that's not part of the discussion tonight. But, but I think that it's important that, I know that the students who have that device and knew how to work it is way ahead of the students who didn't when they're trying to get their lessons going.
Great, thank you.
Just a consideration.
Anybody else have some thought?
Jay, just real quickly, I think that my concern, first of all, I do like this plan, but I, maybe I just need a little clarification on something. And I also want to make sure that we're covering all of our bases. So some of these things I actually see as maybe even having a dual purpose. So for example, the folding chairs and the external storage and the cabinet tables, if we have to do social distancing, some of these things are going to come in pretty handy for us. You know, possibly, you know, as we, as we take a look at that. This is my concern. I'm concerned that, that we're going to have to take a look at our budget. And I just want to make sure that we are 100% covered in terms of what it is that we may need next year, either for the remote learning process, so technology, school safety, and staffing. Those are my three big concerns. And I don't want, I want to make sure that, you know, we're doing whatever we need to do to, to make sure that we're attentive to those things. And then furthermore, as a committee, I really think that what we need to do is to decide what our financial priorities are going to be, our fiscal priorities. Because I think that if we are going to be coming upon difficult times moving forward, then we need to know how it is that we want to be able to spend our money. And, you know, I just listed those three things, because those are the three things that I think are really important, but, you know, I mean, the committee members may have other suggestions. So it's a really two-part thing. One, are we absolutely sure, you know, that we can, is there anything else that we can put, you know, is there something we should put off? Okay, and then use that money, because we, we may need it next year. And then two, to be able to come up, as I said, with these priorities as we go forward, because we may be having to look at how it is that we have to adjust our budget. And I think we all need to be on the same page about that.
Yeah. Yeah, the staffing thing, just to add to what John was saying, because you're probably going to comment on it. Just take the possibility that you have 10 people out, long-term, 10 teachers at various levels, long-term. So, you know, thinking about this, do we have enough in the budget that's coming up? And how do we deal with that?
Yep, well, we touch on a couple of these things. So we are going to talk later on in the evening regarding the 21 budget. So that is on the agenda. When it comes to staffing, whether it was for this year or for next year, this would not be a source of funding that I would recommend you consider because of the, the impact, the negative impact it can really have. And like, basically, you'd be deficit spending at that point, and I would not recommend that. When you take a look at the one-time purchases that are on here, the two huge significant costs are the elementary literacy program that we've been talking about, that, you know, we absolutely need a new elementary literacy program in the district. I really view that as a non-negotiable. And by actually making that purchase now with fiscal 20 monies, you're freeing up $250,000 for the fiscal 21 money. So I really think that's a smart expenditure, both ways.
I agree with that. I'm glad that we're getting it all now.
Right.
I would be concerned that we wouldn't be able to get it in the future.
Yeah, no, no, I, I agree with you. I think I'm agreeing with you. It, so that's significant. The other one is obviously the tech stuff. Whether it's the Chromebooks or it's the interactive classrooms, when we get back to an in-person setting, this is going to be critical to us. Obviously, the Chromebooks could even help ahead of time. But the, you know, the in-person piece of the interactive TVs is critical. Those two numbers are the really the big drivers in this. I think some of the other smaller numbers, I, I do think it's wise, because we're going to have to spend this money one way or the other on the facilities, you know, the PVEs and disinfectants and messers. So why not by now? Because we're either going to need more next year, or we'd be hitting the same budgets. And some of the other smaller items are just those items that have been kind of like hanging around for a little bit. The schools, when they do their budget requests to me, we always kind of come up with a list of, of these one-time fundings. And I'm trying to eyeball this, but I think you're talking, you know, under $30,000 or $40,000 in total, if you look at some of those small, smaller items. And those are items that are going to break the bank. But I think they are going to be very meaningful to the schools when they reopen. So I really am very comfortable making these recommendations. I think when we start to talk about the 21 budget, and we're going to have a tri-board meeting on Thursday night, we've all received a packet from the town manager this afternoon. I had a conversation with him on Friday about a strategy for approaching next year's budget. We're all going to be having that, that conversation in a little bit. But I don't know that we really want to vary too far off of what our recommended and proposed budget for next year was, because that is, is kind of the educational plan that we put forward for next year. And I want to really try to maintain the staffing level and the program level and the service level that was incorporated in that budget.
Can you, I'll speak to the status of, like, our circuit breaker. So in the past, when it, because we've been kind of able to kind of store, there's some room in the circuit breaker, and that, that's kind of running out now.
It's YouTube, iTunes.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
Okay, I would just ask, and can you just speak to, like, the, the status of the circuit breaker in terms of where that's accounted at? Because in the past, we've been able to, you know, use some money and not have the circuit breaker. Now, we're kind of, and to the limit of that.
Can, my screen is frozen again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought I lost you there for a second.
Maybe it'll, it'll jump back in, in a second. And that is something we certainly could touch on. We have built up the circuit breaker revolving fund over the last, I think, three years to basically just shy of $3 million. What the school committee is allowed to maintain in that fund at fiscal year-end is basically a balance that is no greater than their appropriation for the fiscal year. So we're right at that cap. Sometimes we end up receiving, which we're hoping happens this year, just four quarterly payments in a fiscal year. It can happen that you actually receive five, depending on the way the, the payments hit the bank. I don't want to risk it and, and basically ever be in a situation where we put too much money in the circuit breaker fund and then end up losing it. So I'm very comfortable where we're at, just as far as the circuit breaker balance being close to the $3 million. And Joanna can touch on the, the actual. But what we're looking at is, as we do our projection about when the fourth-quarter payment for fiscal 20 is going to come, is it going to come before June 30th, or is it going to come after June 30th? If it comes after June 30th, we've actually built ourselves a cushion, so that's good. If it ever were to come and have to be booked before June 30th, then technically, we're going to have five quarterly payments, because we have the first-quarter payment, the last-quarter payment for '19 came in after the fiscal year began this year. I can break this all on paper for you for the next meeting, so you can kind of see what the, the boundaries are. But that's my concern, getting too much over the $3 million mark, and why we may want to actually cut back a little bit to not come right up to that limit.
Right, and I guess my point is that, you know, we can't carry over too much. I mean, we have to do something with some of this money, because we don't have that, that flexibility that we had in the past.
I'm sorry.
Good, Jay.
I'm sorry, my screen is totally frozen, so I can't see if you're talking or not. But I agree with Dennis, you know, we built up a very strong and solid position. We also, when we talk a little bit later in the evening, in addition to the $1.3 million that Joanna had projected as a surplus for next year, that didn't take into consideration the extra money from the savings in the transportation contracts. So that is an amount that's going to be an additional surplus in this year's budget. And that is going to be an amount that we discuss a little bit later about possibly expanding to help with any kind of a shortfall in next year's budget. And I thought we could talk about that later on this evening under the fiscal 21 outlook. All right, other question, Donna?
No, just, just one other thing that I, I wanted to mention is, is, you know, I think it is worth noting that some of these things on here are things that we may have put as part of our capital project plan. And that we're going to assume the cost of, of these things. So the abatement, you know, I even, some of the technology in the external storage containers might fall under that, that category. I could be wrong, Jay, but, you know, I, I'm assuming that, you know, it's entirely possible that they could have been capital projects. And I guess the point I'm trying to make is that I want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence in terms of helping people to understand that rather than going to the town side, the municipal side, for monies for these capital projects, that we're going to assume the cost ourselves. And I would like to see us to be able to continue to do that as an act of good faith and, you know, and showing credibility on our part about being concerned about how it is that we're spending our money and, and, you know, making sure that, that, you know, people know that, you know, we're, we're making good choices and that they're not feeling like, that, you know, that it's being spent on things that we don't need right now, but just that we want.
Hey, any other thoughts on one-time, one-time purchases? So you want to move on to the transfers? Everybody comfortable with?
Yep.
Okay, right, so, Jay, you want to talk about the transfers, or you just? I think you can hear us.
Sorry.
Probably going to reboot. Also, somebody's got an echo going, so I'm not sure. Sharon, we see you twice on here. I love the fact that you can multiply like that. That's amazing. So I'm not sure if you have.
I think it was Jay's.
Yeah.
It was me. Yeah.
You have to shut off one of yours, Jay, just because we're going to get the echo. So he's back, and he's back.
Yeah, I'm not having good luck with my technology tonight. I apologize for this. Did I miss anything when my computer was stopped there?
No, I just asked people comfortable going on to the, the transfer.
Okay. Maybe I can ask Joanna to walk us through that, just because she's on screen.
Okay.
Okay, so the transfer list looks, it's just a, the list of the one-time purchases that Jay went through. But I sorted it by those that actually require a transfer, because where the expense should be recorded doesn't have the budget funds there right now. And that's the top portion of the schedule. And then down below are the same projects, but we really don't need a transfer, because there are funds in that category. But does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. And then rather than listing, so, for example, the very first one for the literacy program, we've been saying all along, most of this is going to come from the favorable variances from labor and the teacher salaries, coming in less than originally budgeted. Rather than list each individual labor account, I did it by DESI category. So what this is saying is, like, the very first one, in order to fund the $655,000, I'm saying we would transfer funds out of DESI category 2305, 2310, and 3200, all into the textbook adoption category of 2410. So I, I tried to do it that way, rather than list hundreds of account numbers. Does that make sense?
It does. Could you help word a motion that John could?
Yeah, I put that on the cover memo.
Okay. Streamline it, yeah.
On the motion, do I have to mention that second sentence where it talks about the different DESI categories? Or can I just read that first sentence, Joanna?
Well, I put whatever you're comfortable with.
I would include it, John.
Okay. Do you want the motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I make a motion to approve that FY 2020 local operating budget transfer is totaling $1,65,264 for the Chamster Public Schools as presented. This budget transfer is shifting from 14 DESI categories that are favorable to four DESI categories where the items should be purchased.
Second. Any questions at this point? Is everybody comfortable with how that was worded and what we're doing here? So that the list of things is there, so basically, it's, we're transferring them as listed. Everybody's comfortable with all of that? Okay. So if we are, then we'll take a vote. Hi. John.
Hi.
Hi.
Maria.
Hi.
Myself, hi. So five-zero to transfer $1,65,264 for the one-time purchases from the different accounts in the list. All right, so I guess, Anna, you could take the next question if you want, of the refunds and unearned revenue forecast.
Okay. So at the last meeting, I said that I would follow up with you and present how much we've, how many refunds we've given out, how much unearned revenue we would have because of the school closures, and then a new number, which you haven't seen yet on my projection of where the fund balance will be on these revolving funds. So I listed five of the funds. The school nutrition fund, we haven't issued any refunds, but we're projecting $288,000 less revenue, because children weren't in the school cafeterias for a third of the year. Athletics were, you know, we didn't collect $98,700 in spring sports. But then again, we didn't pay spring coaches either. In commed and chips, we did issue refunds of $146,197, and we're projecting we will not collect revenue of $460,000. Because we're not doing the before-and-after-school programs or the Lions, pardon, Lions staff. Are you hearing an echo, or is it just me?
Yeah.
Civic activities, we did issue refunds of $37,817, and that's for the rental of the PAC and the McCarthy Auditorium. And we will not earn revenue of $66,987. And then the turf fields, this is no refunds, but we will not be collecting $37,650, because we didn't have spring rentals. And then the, so that totals $184,000 in refunds and about $951,000 of unearned revenue. And then my estimate for the fund balance on those is on the far right, and none of them will go into deficit. However, the one that's going to come really close is, to actually, athletics and the turf fields. And the problem we'll experience next year with the turf field revolving fund is that bond payment due next May is $80,000. And it's going to be really difficult to make up the lost revenue for spring. And then if we can't rent in the summer, I just want to raise that to your attention, you know, now as we learn this. Then the next paragraph is a little bit about the food service revolving fund. And, um, that we're going, we started up this new seamless summer is the name of the program. When you aren't in school, but you're still serving food. So we applied for that program and we're given approval. And we will receive reimbursement, some reimbursement, breakfast and lunch for each student each day. But we will not receive reimbursement for the adult meals. It's just not covered in this program. And we estimate that cost to be $60,000 for running it for three months. So those are the items I wanted to bring up on refunds and unearned revenue and the impacts to the revolving funds. So I'll open it up for questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Would we be able to use maybe some of the money that we have left over from maybe transportation? Because we can expend all of that to be able to pay off some of these things.
You talking about the adult meals?
Uh, yeah, and the turf.
So Jay, you want to take this or you want me to?
Mute it, Jay.
Not been a good night for me tonight. This is a minus. This is a P minus night. Let me start and then Joanna, maybe you can jump in a little bit.
And it goes on communications, by the way.
I know, I know. I'm failing you. I'm failing you tonight. When it comes to the, um, the turf field revenue, one of the things that I would like to do is at the end of the year, if we have sufficient funds on hand, which I think we will, is we made the payments directly from the revolving fund, which I think is appropriate. Uh, but we could consider basically replenishing the fund or moving the expense from the fund onto the local budget for the, uh, the big payment. I believe it's about $80,000, Joanna, that happens in May. Just because I don't want the fund to, to kind of take the hit for not being able to have the rentals this year and have us always trying to be, catch up to reinstate that payment amount. I think everyone would understand that. The fund is hitting the proper count for the payment. But we're basically going to acknowledge that this was a very unusual time. We couldn't do rentals. We couldn't bring revenue in and try to at least set the fund up to be successful moving forward. When it comes to the, um, the $60,000 for the adult meals, we want to explore a couple of different options for us because there's no real good place to put that expense as a, an adult meal within our budget. FEMA was a possibility because the town can qualify for some FEMA reimbursement. It is not looking like it is going to fall under that, but we're still going to check one more time. And then the town is going to be receiving some CARES Act money. That can either be spent during the current year or after July 1st. Whatever you don't spend now, you can roll over to next year. I want to say it was approximately $3.3 million. And, um, so that money potentially would be available to pay for this. So I did meet with Paul and John, Susan and Darlene last Friday to talk about that possibility. So as we firm up that number, um, I'm thinking that that fund is going to be able to pay for this for us. But we'll be able to report that back to you in June as a kind of a final entry to close out the year. So a bunch of different options to help us pay for that.
Other questions?
Yeah, this is about the coming year. We're discussing that kind of the coming budget. So, um, it looks like when we're in this kind of e-learning environment, that a couple of things really get hit. One of them is athletics, for sure. Um, the other is anything to do with, um, activities that includes rentals or things like that. What other things, um, would be, what other aligned items would be impacted? Or that we can think we're going to have a decrease in revenues? For example, next year could it be that activities fees would be impacted? Because we're not going to be able to offer activities, um, those kinds of things? Are we looking at that at all for this coming budget? We might not be able to offer sports.
A little bit. I think the, um, the issue is though, as we get into next year and it's a fresh year, if, let's say we didn't go back to school, so we weren't able to collect activity fees, we then also wouldn't be paying the activity stipends. Um, so yes, you would take in less revenue, but you would also have less expense. Um, so we would, that would hopefully net itself out.
Okay.
Don't think it could be more.
Excuse me?
I would just say, don't think activities fees generally cover the stipends, right, the moderators?
Basically the, uh, the purpose for them. So the students being themselves. And then also we do have a, a subsidy basically in the local budget that helps contribute to the total amount for the high school and middle school stipends, as well as the transportation for the after-school clubs is in the local budget as well.
Okay. That's what I'm recommending because what I would recommend if we can't offer something physically is that we look at offering it, uh, in an online situation. Um, you know, because I think these activities are so important to students. Um, when you start listening to them, it's a huge part of the education that they receive and that they look forward to getting. And it's also part of their resume, their belief in college. So it is extreme and, and going forward in their life. It develops social, emotional type of learning skills that they can't get just in a regular classroom setting and definitely not online. But maybe we can think about how to transfer some of that and still keep, you know, even if we have to pay an activity fee, I don't think anybody would have a problem with it if they're going to get something. So we'll just think about it. Okay?
I don't really enjoy it. Um, you know, right, the athletic. Mine had $8,000 after not collecting fees. What would it have been if we had supposed? Because I know a lot of that would have gone to the coaches. What would you carry over in that, that, uh, account?
I think, well, remember we had the 20,000 in the local budget to help this fund in case it got close, you know? And I did, we did utilize that 20,000. So I think we would have been probably in about the same spot.
Okay. All right. Uh, other questions on the? All right. So thank you for putting that together and, uh, kind of an update of where we are on our refunds and revenues. Now we're going to move on. If everybody's good, we're going to move on to next year's budget and have a little discussion on that. So I don't know if you want to kick it off, Jay.
Yeah. Um, so everyone received a notice, uh, school community members, the board of selectmen and the, um, team bomb. That we're going to have a tri board meeting on Thursday evening to talk a little bit about um, a number of items related to the fiscal 21 budget. I mentioned earlier, I did go meet with, um, Paul and John and Dolly and last Friday to talk a little bit about statewide revenue projections, what impact that may have on the local budget. He did produce a report that I'm, uh, we're going to be discussing on Thursday evening. So I'm not going to go through the, uh, the entire report, but I'll just give you a couple of highlights for us to be thinking about. Um, for us, I think there was general agreement and, um, you know, Paul, obviously I feel strongly about this and I do as well, that we should try to have town meeting, um, this spring if possible and appropriate and fund a budget for fiscal 21, even if we need to make changes and adjustments during the course of the year. Um, based, and ma- and make those recommendations based on the best information we have available now. Because we do have to craft a spending plan for next year, again, knowing we might have to make tweaks as we go. Um, so we're still waiting to hear if we're going to be allowed to have a, um, a spring town meeting. Monday, June 22nd is the date that has been earmarked. And we're looking at possible places to hold it. Um, one that seems like it may be viable is the gym at the high school. Because if you can actually spread people a little bit more than you can at the senior center and there is still very good parking, so access wouldn't be a big concern. So that is something that we're looking at. And I think, um, we're going to talk about Thursday night to make sure everyone really wants to move in that direction. But I think that makes a lot of sense. Paul and his staff have gone through and actually tried to generate, I think, hopefully some worst case scenarios with regard to what could be happening state budget wise until we get definitive figures from the legislature. So he and his staff have gone through and actually done some projections on loss of revenue coming in instead of increases in state aid, including chapter 70 and municipal funds. Um, if we would actually receive a decrease. And on the top of my head, I want to say it was about a 20% decrease in, um, local aid across the board and all the different, um, topics. And if that ends up happening and we're in, say, a five to six million dollar shortfall, um, city, city or town wide, how do we deal with that? Uh, we'll be talking Thursday night about potentially funding some of that shortfall with, um, not the rainy day fund, to the.
Stabilization.
Stabilization fund, thank you, Dennis. Uh, the stabilization fund. Also then looking at individual department budgets to see, um, if we can cut back. As Paul did some projections as far as if we offset a certain amount of stabilization, knowing we may have to do that again in '22, because I don't think '22 is going to look great either. Um, we don't want to use all the money in '21. We may have to do some reductions. What would that look like if we had to make, say, a $3 million cut in, um, local side between town and schools? So our kind of, uh, apportionment of that fund ended up being about a million three is what we would be asked to figure out if we could reduce from our '21 budget. And ultimately bring that to town meeting, uh, for approval so that we can have a spending plan in place for next year. On the town side, I believe it was a little over a million dollars that they'd be looking at from the various departments to figure out, you know, what can be cut, what can't be cut. Some things are obviously going to be easier than others. All town departments, including the schools, are very salary burdened. We have a lot of salaries. We don't have a lot of non-fixed costs in our budgets. So I do think this is obviously a concern for us going into '21 and '22. Out of my, you know, uh, after we have the discussion Thursday night, I think part of my recommendation and funding strategy to get us through the '21 budget, because I do think the budget we put together and the budget you deliberated on and tentatively approved is a sound plan for education and it continues a lot of the programs and services we talked about. And I, I believe we all feel a need to occur in the schools. One of the ways for us to basically bridge that gap for fiscal '21 would be to find a way to appropriately account for the savings in the fiscal '20 budget for the lack of transportation. So Joanna is actually working to quantify the savings that we're going to receive this year, um, you know, which is potentially in the million dollar range because we haven't operated regular or special education transportation since March 13th. Um, so transportation itself can't carry over from one year to another. But we're identifying different areas of the budget where we may be able to do that. And basically be able to free up a million dollars or so in '20 money that was earmarked for transportation and be able to offset that in '21. So that would be a very significant number and that wouldn't impact the, the programs and services we talked about for '21. The other area where we're going to have some play is because now we're purchasing that literacy program now in fiscal '20 money. We have 250,000 earmarked in '21 that we're not going to need for the literacy program. So we, that's another 250 that we have in play that could, um, you know, relatively easily and painlessly, uh, be able to kind of help bridge that million three in cuts. Now, in the end, could it be worse than a million three? We don't know. I mean, it could be better, it could be worse. I think another safeguard is that CARES Act I mentioned previously, Chamster is going to receive about $3.3 million initially. I think there's more funds to follow with that. Um, the legislature is looking to be able to provide, um, communities some flexibility to be able to use that, um, towards filling holes in budgets, whether it's in '20 or '21 or '22. Um, so that'll be something to watch moving forward because we haven't accounted for any of that in this budget. Um, but that might also be a viable source of, uh, funding moving forward if the picture ends up worsening. But I'd like to, you know, uh, listen to the presentation, obviously Thursday night. Know that I did speak with Paul on Friday, so I understand where he's coming from. And, um, obviously I think that schools should be contributing, uh, with the other town departments to try to make this budget whole. I think it makes a lot of sense for us to try to have a town meeting and appropriate a budget for fiscal '21 so that we have a blueprint to start the year. Um, it's very difficult for departments, but in particular the school department, to make adjustments after we commit to a staffing plan, uh, for the fall. Um, so I think the, the more consensus we can get around that and the better processing and approval we can get of that budget, the better we're going to be as we go into fiscal '21. Um, so that will be our discussion on Thursday night. That $1.3 million, uh, figure is included in the packet, uh, so that's not for anyone. And we'll be talking about how realistic that would be on Thursday night. And then, uh, we'll have this on as an agenda item at our first meeting in June to talk about how we actually want to go about making those reductions. Do we think that's too much? Do we think it's not enough? Uh, these are all talks we're going to have to have in the coming weeks.
Hey, anybody have questions on this? Jay, what do you think the word is from the state? I mean, how can we move forward if they haven't made any decisions yet?
It's difficult. I think it's also difficult not to move forward though. Um, because when you get into like a 112 budgeting scenario, which I think some communities are looking at, um, that really does not provide any certainty, um, to anyone. And I know Paul and his staff took a look at, I think it was like the 2008. Um, last time we kind of had a recession and we had some big cuts. Take a look at what the actual impact on municipal aid was. That's where they arrived at that 20% figure, which I think was actually a little higher than we even saw as a cutback at that point. Um, we did receive significant federal stimulus money, uh, for a couple of years that our money came in to help kind of fill gaps. So we're trying to see if the CARES Act is going to do that or if there will be additional rounds of stimulus at the federal level that are going to help municipalities um, kind of bridge this gap for '21 and '22 is also going to be a concern. Um, so, you know, I think it's reasonable, um, to move forward with the, the reduction as the manager is recommending. I think it puts the town in a better place to at least have there be a budget in place to make adjustments to. And then, um, we need to basically staff and program to that, uh, number. Um, but no, as we get into '21, we may have to make some adjustments on the fly. But at least we do so knowing where we originally started. I think if, if we don't do something now to correct whatever the revenue projections were going to be and, um, you know, to come in with a more realistic budget to where the, the state's going to end up, I don't think it's helpful to us. So I, I do think this is a step in the right direction.
So the, the only reason I ask this is because we haven't received a house budget yet, correct? There's no house budget at this point?
No.
Okay.
The only thing we've received is basically the budget. We haven't received anything yet from the legislature.
Okay. And, and the other thing I, you know, the reason again I bring this up is because I know that in listening to some of our reps talk, um, there was a lot of discussion about the 112 budgeting. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm worried that that's the direction that they're going to go in. So, you know, I'm just throwing that out there, that, uh, that seemed to be something that was, um, was being kind of, um, in some of the meetings and whatnot that they were having. This is something that was being kind of discussed openly. So, right.
Any other questions? So I think, so basically, you know, originally we proposed $63 million budget. Paul was asking us to reduce that by 1.3, what, 61, 6, 6, 7, I guess it says on there. Yet we, we want to be able to have the programming that we had in the, the 100, uh, the 63 million. And we think we can cover that for the transportation and the literacy program. How does that work from an accounting standpoint of, oh?
Well, yeah, I, I think the other thing to, I think we go into the meeting Thursday night just kind of knowing these are the numbers that are being talked about. And behind the scenes, you know, we would basically be trying to put together a, a spending plan to present to you, um, you know, to properly do this. I think the other issue that we do have to think about though is the only number that's in the. I think the other issue that we do have to think about though is, the only number that's in the fiscal twenty one budget now, that is technically. We could take as a reduction, and it's not going to be like a deficit, is the two hundred and fifty thousand in the um, the textbook purchase. Because we're doing that now. Technically, if we move a million dollars, because we didn't have to pay for transportation now, assuming we have to pay for it next year. We need to be mindful going into twenty one, that we basically have a million dollar deficit um, in the budget when we're starting to prepare for twenty two.
So, you know, and again, you know, I, and I mentioned this before, is I think as a committee, we have to decide. You know, um, what our priorities are are going to be and kind of go into um. Whether it be Thursday or subsequent meetings, you know, um, staying focused on that. Um, the other thing too is, I really wanna make sure that uh, that whatever we do um, and that and and what we have is sustainable. Because we've gone through this period in the past where, you know, we've cut, 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 and then we spent a few years rehiring. And getting the programming and staffing in place that we felt that we needed to be able to have um, a successful, you know, vibrant district. And I don't wanna continue to go through that, you know, uh, you know, every time we have this financial downturn. Um, because I, it's just, I don't think it's um, I I just don't think it's healthy for the system as a whole to continue to do that, so. You know, I think we have to, where our priorities are, and I think whatever we do, it has to be sustainable. Um, you know, going forward.
Right, other thoughts? So Thursday, um, seven o'clock, tri board meeting, so um, they've, they sent out the invitation already, so everybody should have it, I think. Write the link, this meeting.
It was, uh, Paul sent out this afternoon.
Okay, right, so, everybody gonna be able to attend that meeting? Yeah. Are you good for Thursday? Sure, I know John.
Sorry, I cut out different, what happened?
I I would just mention, Thursday, so Thursday is the tri board meeting, it's, I'm just making sure everybody can attend. Are you good?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay, great. Anything else on the uh, twenty one budget? Okay, right, uh, so I believe the last item is personnel.
Well, just a very brief personnel report for the month of April for you. Um, just details a couple of um, new hires we have to the district, a couple of resignations and retirements. Um, not a lot of activity for April, because obviously we're not in session. But uh, this will start to pick up as we're doing a hiring for the fall. So just a report of progress, no um, no specific action required of the committee.
Speaking of retirees, now, we, do we have a plan for our retirees? Uh, we, it's, again, a victim of the uh, of the situation, but. Any plans for our retirees, what we're gonna do for them? It's on the two do list, sorry.
Well, we actually, we normally hold a joint meeting, a joint meeting, a joint uh, party celebration with the union board. Um, so we're gonna talk about how we wanna honor the retirees at this point. Um, personally, uh, we'll, we'll do something to acknowledge them leaving uh, the school year. But I think it might be nice to actually hold off to the fall if we are able to reassemble. And have some type of a nice, uh, either lunch and or dinner or something with them at that point. Um, to give them proper uh, proper acknowledgement. But we will, um, a lot of the schools are doing individual uh, celebrations for end of the year type activities. And we're gonna work and coordinate with them to uh, to celebrate the teachers.
And and are we already in that process of hiring for for next year?
Are we what, I'm sorry?
Yeah, in the process of hiring for next year to to replace those retirees and everybody else.
Yeah, we have, we've, we've advertised and posted and a lot of the um, the process is underway.
Right.
Do we, can we do that with the hiring freeze?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's no hi- there's no hiring freeze in place.
Oh, I thought, I don't know why I thought there was.
Well, Paul, uh, when Paul had sent an original email out to us, he had just mentioned like different strategies we could consider. And that was a strategy. Um, but the, you know, and again, we can talk more about this Thursday, we're even at like an upcoming school committee meeting. The, the positions that we included in the budget, obviously the replacements, these individuals retiring, we feel are critical to uh, continue. Uh, but even the new positions we included in the budget, um, I really feel they're critical towards the continued movement to the district. Um, in providing the programs and services that we've tried to address in our long term and short term planning. Um, one example is, I know there are a handful of positions related to the um, the middle school thrive program that we're gonna be creating in McCarthy. Um, yes, there are new positions in the budget, but they're really a direct result of the fact that we um, opened a elementary therapeutic program. Other South Row a couple of years ago, that's been very successful. Since doing so, we have not actually sent an elementary school student to an out of district placement since. But those students are now uh, aging up to the middle school. And if we don't have a complimentary program at the middle school level, um, to properly be able to educate and and continue working with these students. Then we basically just developed a pipeline to an out of district placement. And we would then, instead of adding these positions and being able to um, program for the students of McCarthy. We would have to increase our out of district tuition funding, which I don't think any of us wanna do. Um, so, like, I don't view the positions that we've included in the twenty one budget as um, you know, extras or anything that aren't really part of our our mission. And our um, our our short and long term planning. Um, so those I'm very happy to kind of talk about and defend. Um, but I think those are the things that we need to move forward with, because if we don't, there's a cost, uh, and that cost would need to be quantified.
Any other questions on staffing? Okay, um, so, next up, liaison reports, anybody have anything?
Yeah, me too. So I had the opportunity, first of all, I think there's a council of schools, sorry, John, council of schools meeting tomorrow night, correct? Um, that's, is it tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night at seven.
Okay, um, there's also uh, Charleston Friends of Music um, Thursday night. Um, so I just wanted to mention that to people in case they they wanted to tune in. Um, let's see here, I was at the South Row PTO meeting, um, it was great to see everybody. Um, just a great group of people, boy, I really have missed um, meeting with them. Uh, they have elected a new board, um, their new president is Jumanic Shaw. The vice president is Spooky Vasquez. Um, Daniel Bruce will remain secretary and Kate Ford at the treasurer. Um, so congratulations to those people, and a really big thank you to Emily Dilworth and Beth Cormier, who have um, provided direction and guidance and enthusiasm. Uh, to the PTO meetings um, during their term. Um, so, uh, as I said, it was just great to see everybody. Um, the last thing I want to mention is I went to a town hall last week, virtual town hall, um, that Tammy uh, Govea put on. Uh, with regards to um, the mental health consequences of uh, COVID nineteen. Um, and it was very interesting, it was, it was a lot of social workers there. Um, and, you know, the one thing I did um, continue to kind of highlight is the fact that um. We are taking, we are looking at obviously some fallout from all of this. And social emotional learning was something that we were trying to focus on even before this happened. We identified it as a priority, and it was something that, you know, we recognized that we needed to be able to um, invest um, money and resources in staffing. And um, you know, really heavily advocated for the fact that they need to give us more money, basically. And um, that, you know, and and, you know, kind of went in the direction of, you know, well, we need to tax. You know, the the millionaires, I guess, for lack of a better way, the people who make lots of money. And they, you know, I said, you know, that's all fine and good, and you can do that, but it's not gonna help me, alright, right now. Okay, on this day, when I have kids sitting in front of me or in September, um, that need help and and it's not available to me. So I really tried to drive that point home, that, you know, it's, it's, you, you want these services in place, but they come at a cost. And we need help as a district in order to be able to, to meet the needs of our kids, so give us money. That was it.
Maria, you had something?
Yes, I attended the uh, Harrington PTO meeting online as well. It was excellent, of course, to see everybody, they're a great group, um, they're now, uh, have positions. Out there to see uh, if they're going to elect a a new board or who's gonna stay on and so on. And they were, um, they discussed plans for um. An actual fundraiser, but a normal community type of event. Um, they haven't finalized their thoughts on it yet, so um, but it had to do with providing masks and so on. So they're, they're talking about that right now. They seem to be a great group working together, they've done a wonderful job all year long. And um, they'll, they also provided quite a bit of input on the online learning. Um, and I gave you some of the input already. Uh, they, they, they said mostly, they think teachers, they think that they've been absolutely wonderful. And uh, with their children and in providing great direction to the parents as well. Um, and they have some input, which I think you're gonna get through the surveys, we do um, from the parents, but I'll write it out and I'll send that along to Dr. Hirsch. So she has it as well, okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any liaison reports? Hey, uh, any new items people wanna bring up? And I'll just, I'll just guess, I'll put in a point with the census again, I watched some uh, segment last night, I guess. Johnson's up to uh, seventy eight percent, which is uh, I guess, second most around here, um, and pushing to get over eighty, so if anybody watching hasn't done that yet, if you can do that. I also contacted clerk um, to ask her about uh, bringing in ceremonies after uh, the election on the second. And how this is gonna work, and her answer was, that's a good question, I don't know how it's gonna work yet, so. Uh, she really doesn't know at this point, she doesn't know if she can do it virtually, so she's waiting to hear back, um, so. When she knows, she'll let us know, and then we can decide in terms of a real meeting and all that, how we wanna work that, so. Uh, that's kind of still up in the air, I mean, our next meeting is on the election, so, uh, with the second, so sometime after that, we'll have to get something in terms of a, a reorganization meeting. All right, uh, any new public comments?
Yeah, um, so you're all on this, but Hannah Barker sent in some comments, so I kinda want to run through them.
Sure.
Uh, so Hannah said, uh, the working group discussions are terrific and looking forward to see what insights they produce. Uh, please consider including parents on a working group, particularly from elementary and middle school, and to consider surveying and including students. From all levels as well. Also, kudos for anticipating PP and other needs, hopefully we'll not run into any shortages. And then the question is, should students be required to wear a mask during school? And if so, uh, we're probably gonna need a lot of masks. Um, and the last thing she said, I'll kind of paraphrase this, was. Uh, we know hand washing kills the coronavirus, given the predictions of a false spike. To review how many bathrooms are in school, how many students can be processed, I think she's just looking for some kind of evaluation of how many people can actually wash their hands. And uh, consider how we could use existing water sources, might be modified to provide additional opportunities to wash hands. Uh, hand sanitizer, things like that. Um, let's kind of paraphrase the larger paragraph, but um, that was from Hannah Barker.
Right, right, anybody else have anything?
No.
All right, if there is nothing else, I will uh, detain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all right, uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Yeah.
Hi.
Donna?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Myself, hi, five zero, okay, thank you all very much, we'll see you all on Thursday night.
See you Thursday.
Thank you.